At 7:15 PM on June 8th, 2022. And my name is Katie Catchman. And I now open the Committee of the Whole. And we will start with the roll call. Moby? Ellis?
Rosa.
Francie?
Here.
Gayken?
Here.
Catchman?
Here.
Lauren? Mackey? Join in. Mackey? Okay, I'm gonna count him here.
He's on the screen.
Yep, Morrison? Perachini?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Shade?
Here.
Thank you. Tonight, we do have a guest speaker joining us. We have Josh Martin, who's the CEO of Summit Pacific, giving a presentation on Blue Zones. Welcome, Josh.
Counsel, see the screen here? Is this the web closer to some data? Just wanna make sure you can see it.
Yeah.
In here at the summit.
All move this one. I think he's gonna stay on the server. He's gonna stay. Yeah, I'm just gonna change all the table. Yes, I didn't know.
All right.
Yeah. Will you try your sound one?
Check. Here.
Josh's sound.
Try again.
Yep.
Well, thanks for having me. I am Josh Martin, the CEO for Summit Pacific Medical Center. I want to say thank you to Representative Counselor Catchman for inviting me here. Also, before I dive into Blue Zones, I just wanted to take a minute and say thank you to all your elected officials for your leadership in the last two years, and especially those in service, like first responders, firefighters, and everyone. We couldn't do what we do out there. We're an organization that serves. And we thank you for your service. So I'm taking off the CEO hat of a hospital and putting on a hat of a journey that really our community has been on for probably about five years. And I want to spend some time and talk about where we're at in this journey. But before I kind of open up the presentation, I'd love to learn from this counsel, how many of you actually heard of Blue Zones? Well, that's why I'm here, because we hope that everyone hears about Blue Zones and why it's important. So if you go to the next slide, please. So Blue Zones, and for those that can't see the screen, I'm gonna do some interpretation with my hands. There's a lot of data, and I'll try to give some real high-level points on those data points. But Blue Zones really originated from National Geographic about 10 years ago, well over a decade, when they sent researchers all over the world to identify the communities with the longest length of life or centurions. And they found seven of these communities across the world that had these people, lived to be over 100, and thrived. Loma Linda, California, Okinawa, Japan, and Sardinia, Sicily, Sardinia, Italy. Is that right, Jory?
Right.
Okay. And a few more. But what happened is those researchers said, you know, there's a lot of themes and tendencies between these communities. And we said, well, and those researchers came back and said, what if we actually adopted and brought those principles back to the United States? And the reason why is a lot of our statistics and trends in society are out of control when it comes to cost of care, length of life, and quality of life. So for those that study healthcare like I do, basically, the data would say that cost of care is outrageous, and length of life is actually declining as a society. So we're doing something wrong. So they started taking these Blue Zones principles and embodying them into different communities, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But really, the summary of Blue Zones is to employ evidence-based ways to help people live better, longer. And using original Blue Zones research, Blue Zones works with cities and counties to make healthy choices easier through permanent and semi-permanent changes to our human-made surroundings. Next slide, please. So over the years, there's a link to a YouTube video. We don't have time to watch it, but encourage you, if you have time and you want to Google it or YouTube and do your own research. They've been noted on CNN. They've done TED Talks. It's listed on Today, National Geographic, and really become a very predominant, very renowned source of truth in health and wellbeing. Next slide. And you can go ahead and progress. Oh, there you go. So what they did is they adopted these principles, which is what they call Power Nine. And Power Nine are kind of these fundamental principles that they've embodied from these countries across the world. And a lot is creating an environment where you move naturally, you have the right outlook on life. They found a sense of purpose that they say, you know, the fastest way to death as a human is birth and retire. And they said the challenge with that is how do you give someone a sense of purpose? That purpose actually drives someone's retirement? That how you continue to give that someone that sense of purpose? So for those individuals, for example, Japan, they created these communities called the Wais, where they actually gave those people, those centurions, responsibilities and jobs to do. Right, that they actually gave them a task that you can live within our household, help raise the grandchildren and great-grandchildren, but you have to cook breakfast every day or you have to participate. And where they gave them responsibility, that sense of purpose for that person that felt like they had a reason to continue. So that helped with kind of a mental outlook. The other thing was about lifestyle and eating healthy. So we know that per capita, Grace Harbor County has some of the worst statistics around diabetes, adult childhood obesity, and it's very prevalent. And you say, well, why is that? Well, per capita, we have some of the most fast-food joints than most counties in the state of Washington. So you say, well, is that current to the socioeconomic factors or is it multi-generational? So for example, if, you know, if I opened a bag of Doritos every day for 18 years, what are my children going to teach their children? No different than eating at Burger King every day. And so we'll talk about why that's important, but a certain component of that healthy lifestyle is making good choices easy. And the other component was a sense of belonging, having pride in a community that has shared vision and purpose. As you can know, the importance of planning and community gatherings and creating that space that gives community pride in the place they want to live and they want to raise their children and grow healthy. So those are many factors in what they call the Power Nine. Next slide. And Life Radius, they broke it down even further and say, how do we take these principles and take them into Loma Linda or Fort Worth, Texas, into, take them into Michigan, Iowa, Oregon, and many communities across the country over the last decade? And they broke it down into three pieces, and it's people, places, and policy. So those are three important pillars that are essential to the building blocks of creating environments of healthy living and lifestyle. You can't do anything about people. You have to have good policy, right? And of course, you have to have places, which is what they call the built environment or infrastructure, from roads to walkability assessments, parks and recreation, everything that we talk about and we work on, you know, as a community. Next slide. So then what they did, and they started to use what's really powerful Gallup. For those who don't know, Gallup is a very well-known institution across the country for helping to correlate data and do predictive analytics. So then they can take all the research they've done here in America and say, how are these practices applying to actually making quantitative improvements based on wellbeing factor? So that wellbeing five is actually a score that Gallup has given this work through Blue Zones. So they can go in and actually research and study the impacts of these principles in a community. And it's based on purpose, social, financial, community, and physical. And what that drives, and their studies have shown, health outcome improvement on health utilization, reduction in inpatient unnecessary utilization of healthcare services or hospital, disease burden. But they also look at it from the business outcome of driving prosperity, performance, improving kind of morale in workforce, return to work, reducing LNI claims. They've seen community outcomes based on reduction in crime rates, high school graduation, teen pregnancy, smoking reduction. And then mental health outcomes is improving clinical depression, daily emotions, resiliency, and adaptivity. So all of that has a decade of research done here in our own United States. Next slide. So here's a slide that kind of shows where they have made an impact. And if you can see some of the dots from Oregon, California, Texas, Iowa, Michigan, even Hawaii, what's happening is a lot of states, for example, Oregon, the governor of Oregon said, we're gonna build the healthiest state in the country, and we're gonna use Blue Zones to do it. And so they tapped into a foundation, the Cambia Foundation, and they found three communities, Kalaneth Falls and two others in Oregon. And they approached the city leadership, said, we're going to invest in a Blue Zones initiative, which is a three-to-eight-year project, and start to study it. And then what happened is, you know, between Oregon and Hawaii, Hawaii said, no, no, we're gonna build the healthiest state. And a payer came in and said, we're gonna do 12 different communities across the state to move this initiative forward. If you notice, there's no dots in Washington. So I think there's maybe an opportunity. The challenge we have is, what I believe is, you can have a call from the top, which is, you know, the statement from leadership, or you can have a grassroots movement. And I'm a firm believer in a grassroots movement because then you have ownership and sustainability. And that's why you see, you know, me and my team out here giving these presentations to see if there's a desire, if there's interest to actually try something different or something new. Next slide. So some of the outcomes, I know you may not be able to read this slide, but I'm sharing you some actual statistics. So this is really interesting for me as an organization that really prides itself on being very progressive and making sure we do what we say and say what we do and we study it. And we learn from our failures and we continue to progress. So we spent a lot of time studying, you know, the successes and failures in other communities with this initiative and actually seen the data. So for example, smoking rates declined by 23% to 19% in two years in Alberta-Lee. Childhood obesity rates reduced by 50% in beach cities in California in their 10-year project. The percentage of adults above normal weight reduced from 60% to 50% in beach cities. And then they built a $2 million pedestrian bridge across Interstate 80 in Iowa. And then they increased lodging tax and new funding, new revenue streams that have been brought into the communities. Next slide. So why am I here specifically? Because, well, you know, Shawshere even from this district? Well, no, I'm not, but I serve a county. I really believe that, you know, we can do more together than we can independently. And I'm a firm believer that if we want to build the healthiest community in the nation, we need a vehicle to drive that transformation. So if you don't know anything about Summit, you know, we are a critical access hospital in Elma. We built a wellness center, a $30 million wellness center to help to accelerate our movement towards building a healthier future where we're not so dependent upon sick care, but truly transformation, keeping our communities healthy and out of the hospital. But that whole takes a shift in perspective and visioning. So our vision, we created six years ago, is through Summit Care, we'll build the healthiest community in the nation. And it's a bold vision because we're one of the unhealthiest counties in the state of Washington. So if you go to the next slide, I'm gonna get a little bit more into details around why this is important for us here in Grace Harbor County. Well, statistically, we rank ourselves on health factors. So our public health director, we do a three-year community health needs assessment. We rank ourselves based on four minutes of health days, childhood obesity, suicidal ideation, depression, and, and, and. And that community health needs assessment gets embodied into what we as health departments and hospitals do to address and making those improvements. So we ranked 38, and sometimes, if we're lucky, 36 out of 39 counties in total health factors. That's quality of life and length of life. So in 39 counties, 39 counties in the state of Washington, we're in the lowest quartile. So if you're a CEO of a hospital, what do you do? Right, we say, well, what can we do to improve mental health? Right, we focus on that singular piece. Or we can focus on a true transformational initiative of vehicle to really drive this. And we're really proposing Blue Zones as a vehicle to do this. Next slide. So why it matters for Grace Harbor County is, you know, we didn't become the unhealthiest county overnight, if you think about that. It really is generational. It's been, unfortunately, a community that has lived with unemployment and high Medicaid and Medicare, for those that understand the correlation between unemployment and disease. Right, so we really want to say, how do we move this county forward focusing on economic development, new funding streams, and really driving health improvements and length of life? So right now, Grace Harbor County, for those that don't know, this is stuff that we as an organization and a board, we study this every year. We measure this. We drive outcome. We drive improvement. And we build a plan around this. So statistically, a resident in Grace Harbor County will die three years sooner than any other resident in the state of Washington. So you think about those factors from opioid, again, mental health, food, obesity, all those factors of disease. And if you reside in Grace Harbor County, statistically, the odds are against you. So how do we change the odds? You can see one in three adults and one in five teens are obese. 80% do not eat enough fruits and vegetables. Unemployment in 2020 was 19% during COVID. One in five adults lack social support, and one in four 10th graders have suicidal ideation. Next slide. I'm gonna take a little more focus and dive into our youth. So this is our next generation. And this is again, the stuff that I'm sharing with you is pretty drastic, but I think this is what's gonna call the change. So with our youth in Grace Harbor County, 35% report drinking alcohol. And these are between the ages of 13 and 17 years old. So our children, our grandchildren, nieces and nephews, the next generation. 6% reported using painkillers. 70% of our youth reported using heroin, meth, and other street drugs. 27% of our 10th graders reported seriously considering suicide. And 11% drop out of school. Next slide. And then to compound that, Summit Pacific has made significant efforts in addressing the opioid epidemic by building a MAT clinic, having 99% of our providers waived for Suboxone therapy, building mental health programs, continuing to create access for primary care. But then we had two years of a crisis. And statistically, all the work that we have done was undone in the last two years. And so the new statistic is 38% increase in opioid death in Washington State in 2020. So if you think about opioid death, add another 38% to that in 2020 just due to the pandemic alone. Next slide. So we really have to think about this. For those that can't see the screen, this is the picture. So it's a miner holding a canary. And this slide is powerful because it represents healthcare. Right, and how people understand going in till days of mining. I didn't live during that time, but for those that understand the history, they would send the miner into the cavern. And when the canary hit the miner, it would pass out. It was time to pull the miner out of the cavern because the cavern was toxic. So what did they do? They resuscitate the canary and get the miner back to work. Well, that's our healthcare industry. Right, you think about how we treat. We treat the symptom as opposed to the disease, identifying where that toxic cloud is coming from, the origination, and really focusing on making a better place for that miner to thrive. But we want to take it a step further and say, can we pull the miner out of the cavern altogether? And that truly is a cultural shift that says we as a society, as a community, have to change the way we see about ourselves and our families and our lifestyle. It makes a choice. So what Summit does is we try to say, how do we actually change the way we think about healthcare? Building a wellness center is focused on population health and prevention, access, and engaging our community differently than just the episodic sick care delivery model. So example of that, if you think about how we get paid as an organization, the only way we can build for nutritionists is if you already have a disease. So if you have diabetes, we can build an insurance for that encounter. But if we want to prevent you from having diabetes, there's no money for that. So what we do is we hire nutritionists. And we, you know, we bring that into our organization to focus on prevention. Again, getting to the root cause of the disease and not treating the symptom. So next slide. I'm getting to the end. So in the study, and I guess this goes back to, so why Blue Zones? Well, what we realized is that only 10% of what determines an individual's length of life based on those years of study, only 10% of that is access to care. So creating a wellness center or building bigger hospitals or primary care only impacts 10% of statistics on your longevity of life. 20% is genetic. So you say, I have great genes. Well, that only determines 20% of your factors of how long you'll live. 70% is your environment. So statistically, your environment and your behaviors makes up that 70%. So that's everything based in our community, that built environment, creating that space for people to choose and make healthy choices based on that lifestyle. So if we really want to change the statistics, we have to move beyond the 10% of what we can control as a hospital and focus on the 70% that is out of our control, right, which is the community and that built environment. Next slide. So Blue Zones has actually started to do studies on Washington State and Grace Harbor County. Statistically, Washington State ranks below average on financial index and purpose, as well as community. Next slide. In Grace Harbor County specifically, we asked them to do a deep dive into our community in the last two years through COVID. And they recognized that two in five of our community members do not exercise at appropriate levels. Two in five deal with stress daily. Two in three are obese or overweight. And two in five are not proud of their community. And one in two suffer or struggle with life evaluation. Next slide. So what are we doing about it? Well, we started, again, five years ago, a journey to move towards an assessment to have Blue Zones come into our county. We worked through our county leadership and through different payers to bring some funding to help pay for that assessment. And this summer, they completed. So if you don't know, in 2021, through the epidemic, in the summer of 2021, they completed a county-wide assessment. It included many different stakeholders and sectors from across the county. And they looked at, though, and some of the key themes that came from that assessment is that we have a very low wellbeing in-depth score. We really, we're lacking a shared vision across the county. So how do we get, and really, I won't read the slide, but I'll just speak to some of the themes. And definitely, because we have a lot of competing resources, municipalities for a small sum of resources, we get diminishing returns. So if you think about those competitive priorities, competing for a small, you know, bucket of dollars, we don't get the impact we need. And what happens then is the community collectively, the feedback we've gotten from the survey was that we have a community that hasn't experienced any wins. Right, and therefore, it's the lack of that commitment that says, well, why try? Right, we've done that before. We tried it, it failed. Why do this? And so we need to say, how do we change that perspective? And what they had recommended is that you have to focus on getting that shared vision, collaboration across the county that we're all aligned towards one purpose. And that's the best way to get communities to start to have investment in a plan. And you're not looking for grand slams or home runs. It's the small and incremental wins over time that can demonstrate to our community that we're actually making progress towards a shared vision or goal. So the next slide. So the key is, from the assessment, is really how do we focus on accountability and involvement by all stakeholders, a demonstration of partnership to our community that we're committed for a shared vision or purpose, focus on the small and incremental wins, and share and celebrate those awfully, and then reinforce through repetition. Next slide. So what they did is they also calculated what a potential impact could have on a Blue Zones project. So they took the Gallup survey. They said, based on the learnings from all over states across the country, this is what this will do for Grace Harbor County. So if we committed to a Blue Zones initiative as a county, and said, this is the most important thing we can do, over 10 years, the projected revenue or savings were $259 million. So the money we spend on medical costs that could be avoidable is $104 million over 10 years. So those are avoidable medical costs that we can do through focusing on that prevention function. $117 million in avoidable productivity costs. That's employee turnover. Lost employees are leaving the county. You know, the communities, the employees that I'm trying to retain to work in my hospital that are leaving. And we're trying to recruit people to come and live in our community. Right, how do we create that built environment where people have pride in staying and living? And that cost is $117 million to us over 10 years. And then $38 million in economic impact. So what that means is that's revenue that we haven't been able to tap into from state or national resources because we don't have that shared plan or commitment of collaboration. So we'll continue to compete for the small pool of limited dollars and get the same diminishing outcome. return. So the next slide, and this is really what we're doing next is, you know, the Blue Zones initiative is a countywide focus. They have a kind of a Blue Zones framework. And it really engages local government, tribes, schools, faith-based organizations, food industries, employers, healthcare, community groups, nonprofits, city and wellness groups. Next slide. And so some of the activities that are focused on when we go into an activate, which is really the next phase, we've done the assessment, we're now needing to move into an activate phase, and I'll explain that, is that we then need to start to do kind of a demonstration for three years of pulling together these leaders and focusing on training and steering committee, leadership teams, sector committees, assembling and training local leadership on the plan. Plan is to hire an executive director for Blue Zones and engrain them into the county, deploy a marketing and campaign to raise community awareness, and build a runway to include a funding plan for a larger Blue Zones initiative, which again is a five to eight year span of time. Remember, it's a journey, it's not going to happen overnight. Next slide. So lastly, what's next? Well, Grace Harbor County, as I mentioned, we have a three-year runway that we're committed to, to build an activate. We're initiating a Blue Zones contract, hiring the executive director for Blue Zones, targeting community outreach, building a steering committee, and launching, hopefully this summer of 2022, and then start to work on ongoing funding and campaigning to bring more dollars into our counties, help accelerate this movement. So in summary, the reason why I'm here is because Aberdeen was identified as a catalyst. So in the assessment, they said, the three areas of focus that we need to really consolidate our effort is Hoquim, Aberdeen, and Elma. So I presented to all city councils so far, except for Aberdeen and Hoquim. The plan is then to create awareness around what Blue Zones is, not looking, there's no decision or action to take. We've given this five years of thought, and the summary is this, if someone asks me to go out and build a roadmap to transform the health of this county in three, eight years, I say, I can't do it. But what we can do is partner with an organization that has a blueprint and a pathway to success, that can really accelerate our efforts as a county. And I believe, we believe, as an organization, and many others, that Blue Zones is a pathway to do that. Now, is it, is, do they have failures? Absolutely. I'm not, I work for Blue Zones. What I do is I work for you, I work for this county, and say, we need to do something different. And if not Blue Zones, then what? So we hope that you get involved, we hope that you, as you learn more and hear more, ask the hard questions, push on it, challenge the status quo, get involved if you can, reach out to me, or Jory, or Brad, this is our team that are really helping to support this work. The last thing I would say, and some good news, is that Mason County and Lewis County have joined our movement. So we're now creating kind of a regional movement to help really transform the health of our region through Choice Regional Health Network, and creating even more movement, I think, that will help progress this. So that's the conclusion, thank you for your time, there's a lot of information, very quickly, happy to take questions if you'd like to.
Thanks, Josh. Questions from the council? I'm gonna let you off easy tonight, I don't want anyone with questions. We really appreciate your presentation.
David has a question.
Oh, I kind of have a question, sorry. I'm not sure where to start with. With the focusing points on like faith-based organizations and outreach, and what actual, what are the programs that we state there, like what's the, what's the starting point? What would we like day one, what would we be doing with outreach?
That's a good question. So what I'll share is that the three-year runway for an activate, we've committed to as a steering committee, the steering committee really had different representation from Cosmopolis to county commissioners, you know, school and faith, we had a lot of representation, United Way, College, Y N C A, many of us were involved in that steering committee, and the decision was to move forward. Would also share is, how are we going to pay for an activate, which is that three-year commitment, because it's not free? Well, the good news is that we've secured funding through Choice Regional Health Network to pay for that, that three-year runway, as kind of a, hopefully, an accelerator to help move this work forward. So how do we, where we start from here is this, is a conversation, it's just making you aware, giving you more questions or our answers, because we don't have a lot of answers, but engaging all the different faith communities across the county, and we had a lot of coalition, a lot of different faiths that are, we've been meeting and presenting to, they're going to be essential as part of that building block around community and how important this work is. And so we hope to launch that steering committee. What will happen is, we'd love to have a delegate from Aberdeen. City Council Mayor, School Superintendent Dr. Henderson sat on that committee from the school district, she was part and instrumental in fighting for Aberdeen, just, you know, and she really felt that this was important work to happen here in Aberdeen. And so then I guess the answer to that is, we'll be reaching back out and asking if you would participate in this work and have a delegate to represent Aberdeen as part of the countywide coalition.
Any other questions from the council? Councilperson John.
So I'm not remembering exactly what it was called, but how does Blue Zones complement, or is it instead of some of the other initiatives that we've embarked on over the last decade to, you know, we have the Healthy Use Survey and some other things, initiatives that our health department started that sound a lot like what you're talking about? How, how are, how does that complement, or does it replace? How are you working with some of the other people that have some of the same goals as you?
It's a great question. Again, I wish I had three hours to give five years of information to you quickly. So Mike McNichol, the Director of Public Health, was on the steering committee, as well as Commissioner Rains and other representatives, and it really is instrumental in supporting public health work. In fact, a lot of counties in other states use public health as the driving agency to move this work forward. There's also faith-based groups that drive this work, so for example, Ventus Health in Wall Wall, Washington is committed to a project, and they're using Ventus Health as a convener for that. So it could be faith, it can be public health, but the idea is that, you know, public health is only a piece of that. They may not be able to step into the built environment and infrastructure, right, that you do, or schools. And so I think it's really, the Blue Zones is all the piece that's missing from the entire puzzle to bring it all together. Otherwise, we're to continue to do what we do, is work in our silos and focus on what's important to us, and there's no mechanism to really move the county collectively, and that's the struggle.
Any other questions from council today?
I got one more. You mentioned a footbridge that we built in one of the cities, what sort of benefits can we see out there locally that would resemble that, or what, is there anything, is there any ideas that have come forth?
Absolutely. I mean, already in the conversations, what we're getting is Ocean Shores calling saying, can you do a walkability assessment? Absolutely. I mean, they look at a kind of built environment and what is...
Is this type of fun to bring like, like a boardwalk to the community?
It's based on, what they do is they kind of identify what's important to Aberdeen, Hoquim, and Elma, and they start to create kind of that shared plan around built environment, food policy, and other factors. And they really say, what are the three most important things we do collectively? Not Aberdeen by itself, not Hoquim by itself, not Elma. But ideally, those are catalysts that then help to drive transformation, Ocean Shores, Westport, and Clearing, all over the county. But we have the Quinault Indian Nation that's, you know, we're working with on, you know, different aspects, and, you know, their involvement and wanting to participate in Blue Zones helps their community. So I think the point is that there's, it's kind of based on individual needs, but it's all about built environment, you know, people, places, and policy, and identifying what the highest priorities are. And Blue Zones comes in, overlays a blueprint, helps accelerate that work. Well, thank you for your time, I'm happy to come back out anytime, stay tuned for more information, we look to launch this summer. Thank you again.
Thanks, Josh. Are you doing the presentation?
I did leave some flyers for the guests that would like some flyer to hand out to the back.
Okay. We'll regroup with that technology here for a second. Next on the agenda is our department head updates. Do we have any updates tonight that department heads would like to share with council? Director Barnum?
I want to be right next to my monitor, or my camera. All right. Parks Director Stacy Barnum. On the agenda tonight, I'm only going to have one item, it will be a report for the accession of an item into the city's museum collection. The committee report regarding an amendment to the city council meetings, that's going to be tabled, is my understanding, so that the council has a little more time to get more information on that. Projects in process, submitted the Capital Heritage Grant, submitted a small grant to the Grace Harbor Community Foundation to hopefully build a pickleball court at Pioneer Park. That was named Washington State's, like, the state of Washington, or the sport of the state of Washington in 2021. And so it's a pretty fast-growing sport, and I have actually received a lot of requests from citizens to add pickleball to our park system, so, put a grant for that. The Little League Field and Restroom Project, we received some donations from local businesses through grants. We got a grant from Timberland Bank, the Aberdeen Rotary Club, the Sierra Pacific Foundation, and the Windermere Foundation. I'm working on the update for the Parks Comprehensive Report. The report expires this year, so there'll be some upcoming public hearings, and we'll be sending out and doing a digital citizen survey, so that the citizens can provide input on what they'd like to see in their park system. And I'm working with Director Sol on an update to Fund 107, which is the Rotary Log Pavilion Budget. That's based on increased income and also the request to replace the heating system. Now what's happening in the parks, on June 10th, this Friday, the local Windermere Grace Harbor has selected Aberdeen Parks as their volunteer project for their Volunteer Day. They're going to partner with the Bloom Team, and so they'll be downtown doing a cleanup this Friday. We appreciate being selected for that. On June 15th, the Park and Play Program begins, that's held in our parks around Aberdeen, North End Park, Peterson Playfield, Finch Park, and Pioneer Park. That includes the Summer Free Lunch Program and a partnership with the Aberdeen Timberland Library and the Y N C A Grace Harbor Does Programs for Kids as part of the Park and Play Program. So we're excited to get that started, that's Monday through Friday, and it starts at 11:30. And then the Splash Festival will be back finally in full force this year, so mark your calendars for July 4th. It will be held in partnership at the Grace Harbor Historical Seaport location, which I know Councilperson Ellis has been doing a good job of promoting that. So mark your calendars for 12 o'clock on the 4th of July at the Grace Harbor Historical Seaport. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Barnum. Other updates from our department heads tonight? Director Sander?
Yeah, I wanted to bring up that the downtown Aberdeen Revitalization Traffic Improvement Project, the Roundabout, is ahead of schedule, and we will be doing a full closure on the intersection, starting on June 15th. So we put up press release out tonight, it'll be on the website, and we'll have a lot of detour signs up, we think we have a good detour plan. So anyway, main thing is that it is, we've delayed it till the 15th, they're ready to go right now, but we delayed it to the 15th, so that school is out, so we're not creating some issues with school traffic, but be on the lookout for, for that traffic congestion you're going to find on Market Street.
Any other updates from department heads? Is anybody on Zoom? All right, I will hand it over to the mayor.
Yeah, I have an item tonight. You know, every once in a while, you get city staff or somebody that just sticks out. Here at Aberdeen, I know we have a lot of city staff, department heads, that go above and beyond all the time. But there's one guy tonight that, at least I have him for a couple more days, that I'd really like to express my gratitude for his years of service here, always reaching above and beyond the call of duty. I should have made the list, because there's a number of things, number of different hats that he's worn, many times overseeing emergency medical services and helping with, with emergency practices for catastrophes and all these things, overseeing the Aberdeen Fire Department, overseeing the Hoquim Fire Department, working with the RFA. It just goes on and on, and he never, ever backed down from taking some of these things on. It's just magnificent. Excuse me. So, Tom Hubbard?
Please come. Please. I'd like to, that is black. For all your years of service here, that, and you like serving Grace Harbor communities, and emergency medical, health, and all this. I got you for two more days, so I'll have to see if I can come up with something that we're asking. Thank you very much. Let me, let me... That is amazing. I have a goal to do for a few minutes, this wasn't supposed to be happening, but I got flued in today, so I have to drop a few notes. First of all, thank you, mayor and council, past councils. Mayor Bill Simpson is the one who appointed me here, and here in my heart, me and his wife. Truly, if you say who loves Aberdeen, it was the Simpsons. So heartfelt thank you to them, current council, past council, I could not have done it without your support, the fire department could not have done what we've been doing without your continuing support. New fire engines, staffing, fire service specialist Myers' position a few years ago, we are truly grateful. Want to thank a few other people, I want to thank my wife, who is here tonight, I don't know if she was in on this or not, but I admire her, brought her, she truly has been supporting me through my whole career, definitely since 2012 as chief, and my daughter Natalie, who couldn't be here, very supportive, I will say, Assistant Chief retired Melitza in 2018, who said, hey, we should take on Hoquim, because it'll be good for the community. And I went home to my, my wife, and it's a running joke in our house, "Ritz says..." So we did Hoquim, and I think we did it proud, and we built some bridges, that's another story for a different day about what they like to do, and bridges, but she was there through thick and thin, supporting me for Hoquim, so thank you very much for that. And also thank Susie Johnson, Fire Administration Coordinator, for the Hoq, Aberdeen Fire Department, and as we all call her, the true chief. I could not have done what I've done without Susie. Susie, can you stand up? Susie is also retiring at the end of this country, for 34 years with the city of Aberdeen, there's a lot of knowledge hanging up, where I pale in comparison to what she knows, and I could not have operated without her. So we've had a lot of good times, a lot of hard times, I've taught her how to not embrace conflict, but at least say it's okay. And so, you know, I've achieved my purpose. Who I really want to thank, well, I want to back up a little bit, I left some people out. In the room tonight is Chief Jeff Myers, Deputy Chief Strong, Assistant Chief Goleman, Chief Leonard Johnson, Deputy Director of Emergency Management, Hannah Cleverly, and Matt Miller, Hoquim Fire Chief. I could not have done what I've done without their network, their support, their, what do I do now, them calling me, me calling them, truly a network, Chief Schumay, that's not in the group, truly a network of support, emergency services, how do we tackle this? How do we do emergency planning for tsunamis, Cascadia? And then COVID came along, and we spent hours and hours and hours dealing with that. This group you have here is, is not, they have, no other state, no other county, no other region has anything on the professionalism that this group have. We were blessed to have this group, whether we're retired or not, we will continue to give to this community because we truly care. And so I want to thank them for all being here. Now, the group that I really want to thank is the people that work for me every day of the week, some days a week, 24 hours a day, that's my line staff, in Aberdeen and in Hoquim, I'm going to include them, but I'm focusing on Aberdeen. Day in, day out, they exceed my expectations, they are an amazing group of people, and they deserve a round of applause as well. Every day they go out with compassion, professionalism, integrity, and do the work that no one really wants to see. They see people in the worst possible conditions, talk about Blue Zone impact, we are seeing it on a day-in, day-out basis. These people exceed my expectations. One of the things I put forth is, when I became chief, is I want you all to be master craftsmen of what you do, fire, EMS, rescue, you're going to be master craftsmen, and they have exceeded my expectations. And I am just honored to have been considered their chief. They made it easy, going back to my previous life, where I worked on ships, and the job of the ship's captain is to keep the ship on course with gentle course corrections, I could do the same thing in our department. They kept the ship moving forward, and I would just do gentle course correction. So amazing group of people, support them, support Aberdeen, support Hoquim, and all that they do, because they're out there working really hard for you. Now I'm going to finish, and I'm going to do, finish with two requests of this council and this mayor. The solution to the response staffing and operational issues facing the fire department in Aberdeen and Hoquim is some form of regional fire authority. We've worked hard to put out a product, we support that product. I fell short as the chief in bringing it to fruition, I will own that. The solution is there though, you have people still working on that regional fire authority? Cosmopolis has now officially voted to become part of that, and they're, we're working with their interim chief on operational, how is that going to look? The planning, the RFA planning committee is still a viable committee, they have met, as the operations group gets up to speed, they're going to pull that committee back in. Here's my request, support the RFA. Support the operational planning that they bring forward to you, ask the hard questions, but for goodness sakes, don't listen to the negativity, don't listen to the naysayers who don't have the facts. We lost that battle because people who should have known better did not come to me, people I've known for a long time, they could have come to me and said, tell me about it, chose not to, but they got on social media. Disgusting. This group right here deserves what the regional fire authority can bring. The community deserves what the regional fire authority can bring. We understand the cost, we also understand, we can bring a much better, sustainable product. That's number one. My second request is fire facilities. We have spent the money on planning, we have a plan ready to go. I'm grateful to the council who met with us last week on me saying, we need property, we need to move forward. I respectfully request that you expedite this process. This group right here, I have requested that they be master craftsmen, and they are. Master craftsmen need tools to work, the fire stations are the basic essential tool for them to move forward and work. We need to get these facilities going. We need property, we need to build them, and it needs to be wrapped into the RFA. That is my two requests of this council tonight. I close by thanking you again, it's been my honor to be a member of this department, it's been my honor to serve these people as fire chief in this community. I continue to work, I will promise to continue to work on various aspects as my wife lets me. And with that, thank you very much. with that, thank you very much.
Chief Hubbard, a huge thank you from the council. And I will invite, if a council member wants to say something, I say, say it. Councilperson Ross, I knew you or councilperson Shaw was gonna jump in.
I just, I've worked rather closely with Chief Hubbard through the whole RFA process, and he is an amazing leader, and I just appreciate so much everything you did. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
I'm pissed at what it says on the plaque.
Oh.
Let's hope I think you read it.
I was going to, sorry.
Congratulations on your retirement, Thomas Tom Hubbard, June 10th, 2022. In sincere gratitude for the compassion, guidance, and outstanding leadership you provided to all of us with your 27 years of service to the city of Aberdeen.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll rise to the challenge. I thought we had till June 30th.
There's a story there.
I'm a little choked up, but I think that what we all just saw is how well-served we've been for years. And now, this council does need to rise to the challenge that's been put before us. And thank you, Chief Hubbard. I will treasure always the trust that I had in you and the time that you gave me whenever I needed to talk. And just thank you.
You're welcome. My pleasure. I mean, direct at the top. See, that's how it is.
Thank you all for coming. Yeah, you can't leave.
All right. Do we have any department head update? Oh, we're done with that. Mayor's report. Do you have more stuff to report?
That's all.
Great report tonight.
That isn't that a good one?
Yeah.
Best one ever, yeah.
Non-study committee reports. Council members, any updates from council members? Councilperson Ross?
I attended the museum board meeting last evening, and we continue to have the volunteer days once a week that are going very, very well, and working on getting all the necessary things together so we can start moving into the new building. So excited about that.
Any updates, Councilperson Ross?
Last Saturday, I was part of the strategic planning effort held at the Graves Harbor historical seaport. It was facilitated by a fellow who runs the seaport, and we've got a lot of really good work done. The seaport's really excited to be helping with the Splash Festival, and so all kinds of exciting things coming up. Ooh, my, the Aberdeen Bounders Parade, so keep an eye out. Lady Washington will be coming back to port pretty soon, and I'll keep you up to speed.
Thank you. Any other updates from council?
Nothing to forget about.
Councilperson Mackey?
Yes, I apologize for not attending this evening. We've had some, a lot of family issues going on in the family, and one of them happened today. So my transportation just wasn't ready for tonight, and I do need some transportation. So I will be there next council meeting.
We look forward to seeing you in person, and always appreciate you joining us on Zoom.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilperson Mackey. Any other updates from council this evening?
Seeing none, I will adjourn the committee of the whole and hand it over to the mayor for the main council meeting.
Thank you. It, this is Mayor Shave, and it is Wednesday, June 8th, 2022, at 8:11 PM. And I call the Aberdeen City Council Meeting to order. First item is the roll call. Deputy clerk, will you please take roll call?
Obi?
Deputy clerk, I see.
Obi? Ellis?
Present.
Francie?
Here.
Yeakin?
Here.
Cashman?
Here.
Lawrence?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
Morrison? Perachini?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Shave?
Here.
Mayor Shave?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to excuse councilmembers Obi and Morrison. I'll second.
Motion was made, seconded to excuse the two council members. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries. Um, next item is the flag salute. Chief Hubbard, would you lead us in the flag salute tonight? Thank you, sir. Next item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Mayor Shave, there is one change to the minutes that were published, and that was the addition of Tara Merritt, who was appointed to the civil service board. That was motioned by Ross and seconded by Morrison, so I would make a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion was made, seconded to approve the minutes of the previous meeting as corrected. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any additions or deletions?
Mayor Shave?
Yes.
I promise I won't talk the whole council meeting, but I have an item to pull from the agenda, and that is under special agenda items, Report B3, which is the ordinance for remote attendance. There's still a few questions from council members that are floating around out there, so we're just awaiting responses before we decision that. So I would make a motion to remove that from the agenda.
Second.
Motion was made, seconded to remove that item from the agenda. Any discussion? Uh, councilmember Shaw?
So I'll just share that I was one of the people with some questions, and I just wanted to apologize for not responding to the draft that Director Bryan sent out. I didn't see it. And, but I did, just so the council knows, one of the things that I was curious, was looking at is that I think it's too narrowly drawn, and I'm looking at ways to put in more leeway that more closely reflects the actual discussion that we have. Because right now, if you go in and you look at the ordinance, you know, we're excused and approved, quote unquote, to attend remotely if there's an earthquake, fire, flood, et cetera. But we also, I'm looking to try and find a way to add in there our discussion about sickness, travel, personal health and safety. So just so you know, those are some of the things that I was gonna be looking at, trying to make sure that council members aren't penalized when we try and, you know, take, take care of ourselves. So, thank you.
And that is what we thought was covered in the first part of that ordinance, but we do need clarification to make sure that in certain circumstances that it actually does serve that purpose. So until we get that confirmation, it makes sense just to hold off.
Okay. Is there any other comments? Seeing none? The motion's on the floor. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That item will be removed from the agenda. Let's go to public comments for anything that's on the agenda. For whatever's on the agenda, public comments. If, if it's, do you have a comment of something on the agenda? Okay, I'll open the floor again for all public comments. So let's move on to finance committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The finance committee took the night off, and so we'll go right into the approval of my expenditures. I move we accept the expenditures. I second that.
Motion was made to accept the expenditures and payroll. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Never mind. I'm lost. Who wants to run this? I do this every single week.
Motion approved accounts payable in a total amount of $1,370,573.30, and payroll in the total amount of $871,470.57. Check numbers 25506 through 25515, and 77599 through 77774, and wires 1356 through 1357. Roll call vote. Obi? Ellis?
Aye.
Francie?
Yes.
Yeakin?
Yes.
Cashman?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Morrison? Perachini?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, it approved.
Thank you.
And that's it for finance committee.
Thank you. Public Works Committee?
Thank you, Mayor. Public Works met yesterday, and we will go straight into public hearings. I'm B. This is the date set for the public hearing to consider vacating the remaining 20-foot wide alley right of way between parcel 010103700600 and parcel 010103700700, totaling the length of approximately 100 feet next to the transit station. I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made, seconded to open the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Eyes have it. The public hearing is now open on this matter. If there's anybody that wishes to speak on it? Is there any communication on this?
None on this one.
Okay.
Mayor, seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion was made, seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed.
Thank you. Item number two, this is the date set for the public hearing, 2022, to receive public comment on the proposed transportation improvement plan for the years 2023 to 2028. I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion was made, seconded to open the public hearing on this matter. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now open. This involves the public transportation improvement program, six year, the transportation plan for 2023 and 2022, 2028.
Mayor, we had some written in comments.
It's, I'm gonna bring this up to the council's pleasure. We had several written comments on this, and we haven't been reading the comments. But in this case, as a public hearing, if you want these to all be read, we could do that. Otherwise, they will just be submitted for the record.
And read in summary. I can summarize them.
Or read in summary. Councilmember Shaw?
My first thought on that is, you know, public hearing is different than public comment, and that even pre-COVID, our practice on written comment for a public hearing was to acknowledge that we had gotten written comment from so and so, and that the correspondence would be shared with the council and accepted into the record. And if it's short, you know, a few sentences, and very, I leave that to the discretion of whoever's got the written record. But under all circumstances, the council should receive the comments in summary.
Council was sent via email all the comments, and I can read the summary if you would like.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's what the council is preferring. So use the microphone, please.
Okay. So the summary of emailed public comments, public comments are for the transportation improvement plan. The first comment is from John T.I.E.D.R. from 109 First Avenue, and the summary was essentially, First Avenue Road is in need of repair. The second summary is from Diane Carter, Board 3, Address 312 First Avenue. Summary, deterioration of residential streets and sidewalks needs to be addressed. And the third one is actually the same document, same letter, from Diane Hanson in April, Obi Boiling, Boiling, and the summary is same letter for both of them, that is concerned with the TIB not having a plan of backlog, to deal with the backlog of old concrete and asphalt streets. And council was sent this, and this will be on the website with the note section. And that's it, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none further public comment, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion was made, seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed.
Mayor Shave, we will move on to reports and communications. We have a report from Public Works and the Public Works Director recommending that the city council approve a resolution making up to $2,500,000 available if necessary from the insurance reserve for the Fry Creek const station project. The intent is that any money utilized by the project will be returned to the reserve via an inter fund loan. I move we adopt this report.
Second.
Motion was made, seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion?
Mayor?
Uh, with the councilmember Ellis.
I'm concerned about dipping into the reserve funds. If, to do so leaves us with 1.4 million in our reserves, which really gets us down to bare bones. And, and I was just wondering, could, we set aside $7 million towards Fry Creek and the levy, could that help cover this until the money comes through? Use that 7 million instead of growing from these reserves.
Councilmember Shaw?
Thank you. We did discuss the reasons for this at length at our committee meeting yesterday, and I'll try and summarize via an email I wrote and share with the council that. try and summarize via an email I wrote and share with the council that, and I shared this email with our Public Works Director and he didn't tell me I was wrong, so I feel comfortable sharing my little summation of what we're dealing with here. And this is a safety net provision that both Rick Sander and Nick feel strongly about, given the current climate of rising prices in the current bid climate. The documents make sure.
Well, my phone is about to die, so I just love being here.
Sorry. He's trying to mute.
So the documents that were shared with the council and during our Public Works discussion were clearly share that these, that if these funds are needed, it will be paid back through an inter-fund loan from the utility reserves. It's just that if needed, they will need to move quickly and our cash reserves are the quickest way to move money. Also, potential grant funds that we have a high probability of obtaining have been identified and I'm, so there, it's not, it's not likely that even if we end up using, using this, you know, we, we, it's unlikely we'll, there are the whole burden of it. But right now, we're dealing with a fish window and if we don't secure the ability to complete the project, we're looking at having to delay a year. So I hope this explanation helps.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Do you want to say something?
Oh, I had a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I should've just been like.
I'm sorry.
Just add that I did talk to Nick about this, Nick Bird, a little bit about this the, earlier and there is a large request out to the legislature and as part of that, our community with Hope Room included has over a $12.5 million match. So the $7 million that is currently aligned for the North Shore levy should remain as is until we have secured all the funding and understand the match requirement. If we pull from that $7 million now, then we're going to come up with issues later when it comes time to match that as well. So it's there and there's a reason for it to be there and right now, maybe not the best use of that money for this.
Okay, thank you. Public Works Director Sanger.
I want to also address the statement by Liz, that the $7 million was set by resolution for the brick grant, which was a $50 million ask and we set by resolution dedicating that money so that if they do come through with the brick grant, we have that money as match set aside. If we were to use some of it, we'd be going against our own resolution and breaking the conditions of the, of the ask. So that money has to stay right where it is. It can't be used.
Councilmember Ellis.
Public Works Director Sanger, may I ask, with, when we're writing grants, is there a contingency that's often written into these grants? I ask because I can see for all the projects we have out there, increasing costs could be across the board and we can't, we can't keep dipping into our reserves to cover that. Do many of these grants include that? Thank you.
Go ahead, Rick.
I think the committee report states it pretty clearly that it's not dipping into the reserves on a wholesale basis. It's a loan against the reserves. We established in our rate study and our, and the rates we brought forward by ordinance, there would be money for debt, for debt through the stormwater for these projects. Now, alls we're doing is borrowing it from general fund and paying back the debt load through utilities, which is exactly what we went to council for three years ago and got approved. So we are not doing anything that we haven't already been approved in the whole scale plan of how it's going to work.
Thank you. Any other questions for discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We'll move on to resolutions. We have a resolution committing local funding to the Fry Creek pump station project. I move that we approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve this resolution on the Fry Creek project funding. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? Motion carries.
And that's resolution 2022-09.
Thank you. Anything else, Councilmember Shaw?
Yes, we'll move on to ordinances. We have the third reading and final passage of Bill Number 2204 and ordinance amending the Aberdeen Municipal Code Section 2.60.010, changing the residency requirement of park commissioners and amending the Aberdeen Municipal Code Section 2.60.040 to prohibit blocking, obstructing or blocking access to city park facilities without city authorization. I will leave, adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made seconded to adopt this ordinance. Any discussion? Under discussion?
I just have some questions about a quorum being formed without the residents being ever, ever, with, without, with the, with the community not being, having a majority of people outside of the city limits. We like to say if there was three from Aberdeen and two from out of it, where would we divide that line? If there was a situation where the quorum was formed with just people from outside of the city limits and?
Mayor Shay?
Go ahead, Councilmember Shaw.
I was prepared to offer an amendment tonight to the ordinance. You'll find this proposal on page 34 of our agenda and section one of the proposed ordinance, line three, I would propose to add the words, quote, "the majority of whom live in city limits of Aberdeen." And the intent of this amendment to the ordinance is that, yes, we recognize the unique and very important partnership between our schools and our city. Our city uses the school facilities all the time. We, there's, the partnership is extraordinary and very, and serves our public well, but at the end of the day, we want our parks to be controlled by the city of Aberdeen and so there should never be more than a majority, the majority of Parks Board members should be from the city of Aberdeen and that would be the intent of my proposed amendment.
Thank you.
Okay, an amendment has been advised. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion was made seconded to amend the third reading of this ordinance. Any discussion on the, on that? Under discussion?
I was just wondering if that creates any issues as people leave, when there's that gap between when people leave and when they're appointed? If that would create problems with the quorum?
Well, you need two people, sorry, Parks Director Stacy Burnham. So the amendment is that for people who are appointed to the board and not when there's a quorum, that was my understanding. So it shouldn't impact a quorum.
So it doesn't impact a quorum? Only as they're appointed? So there's five people?
There's five people.
So three people would reside in Aberdeen city limits?
Correct.
Two within school district limits? Got it.
All five could be within the Aberdeen city limits, but never more than two from outside.
Yes, thank you.
I think that's an excellent amendment.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, please. I remember.
Is, Mayor, is it a roll call vote on the amendment or?
Oh, we have to vote on the, no, we voted on the amendment already, didn't we?
No, it's still on the table. It's on the table.
Okay. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Seeing none, motion carries. Amendment, the, the motion for the amendment has passed. Now, there was.
Vote on it as amended. Make motion. Oh, so it's on me now? Mayor Shay, I move that we vote on the ordinance as amended.
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made and seconded to pass the, to the, to vote on the amendment to pass to the, pass the third reading as amended and that's a roll call vote.
Okay. Obe? Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yes.
Yeakin?
Yes.
Cashman?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Morrison? Perachini?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you.
And it's ordinance number 6684.
You know, if we had these council meetings like during the lunch hour, I think it'd be a lot easier.
I know, I'm pretty tired.
Summer hours.
Yeah. Okay. Moving on to public safety.
Thank you, Mayor Shay. Public safety meant to safety at 6:30 PM and for the first comment, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Shuney.
Thank you, Committee Chair Ross. So, well, I was initially going to make mention of this during the department head section, but then I didn't want to keep Chief Hubbard's thoughts waiting any longer and so chose, after speaking with Committee Chair Ross, that I would wait. But it, so I felt at liberty to provide, put together some thoughts, if you will, with respect to, and it was great debate last City Council meeting regarding open hearing and I will, I will say, for me personally, I am a supporter of the second amendment or second amendment rights with that. And this is always a hot topic button and I recognize that. However, you know, the proposal that Director Barnum submitted at the last City Council meeting, as I mentioned, did garner great debate, but that merely was meant to address the permit process and changing that to a conflict state law. So if you would bear with me, I first want to share that department heads, we work very hard at trying to keep our respective codes up to date with the most recent case or changes of law for the sake of our citizens. For anybody that's tried to navigate the volumes of laws associated with the state of Washington, whether it be the revised code of Washington, which are the RCWs, or the Washington Administrative Code, which we refer to as WACs, it truly feels like you need a law degree to know where to look for them and then to understand what you're trying to read. Our AMCs, the Aberdeen Municipal Codes, are really a far easier way for our citizens and I'll be frank for, for me as a police chief, to look up the various codes that we have and then to be able to provide reliable information to our citizens. And our citizens, I think, who are impacted by the laws within our AMCs will refer to them as well. At the last City Council meeting, we obviously heard from a member of the public who cited a portion of the United States Constitution and gave their interpretation of why Director Barnum's proposed amendment should not pass. We also heard, which I appreciate, from Councilmember Francie, who shared a portion of the Washington State Constitution. And then other members of the City Council shared their personal feelings, why they were not going to support the proposed amendment. I will tell you, this really brings up a topic for law enforcement that we've dealt with for decades. What do you do when there are laws passed that we may not agree with or perhaps we feel are unconstitutional? And I will say again, I am less than thrilled with the 2021 legislative session that I think many laws passed and in my personal opinion, did more harm to public safety than perhaps was the intent. The law that prevents law enforcement from pursuing suspects for most crimes is a perfect example, yet we in law enforcement are bound to follow that law. On a side note, I hope that certainly gets changed in the 2023 session. Just like every elected city council member here, every commissioned police officer took an oath of office that we saw and we swore to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Washington. But how do we resolve potential conflicts? The leaders that we elect to the state level, they pass laws, the executive branch then approves passed laws or may veto them and then it's the judicial branch that may get involved where there is a question about constitutionality. The Martin B. Voise decision that involved a law that viewed, that was viewed as criminalizing homelessness is an example of overturning a law that many viewed as being unconstitutional and it made it that way, its way all the way up to the United States Supreme Court. At the last City Council meeting, I would mention that I was going to bring forward a proposed amendment to the AMC Chapter Nine that addressed the content of RCW 941300, a state law that went into effect actually over a year ago, in May of 2021. And it addressed restrictions on open carry at certain demonstrations. After the vote by the council and the statements made by some of the council members, I felt inappropriate to table the proposed amendment until we had further discussion. But contrary to what some may think, state law preempts city code. In other words, law enforcement has to follow state law if it conflicts with our city codes. For those of you who have the opportunity to read RCW 941300, specifically Section 2B, you have, will have read that now it is unlawful to open carry within 250 feet of certain demonstrations, a law that has yet to be amended or found to be unconstitutional. In addition to that, another law that will fall under RCW 941305 will make it unlawful to open carry within our city council meetings. That law goes into effect tomorrow and for those who may be interested in the specifics of that bill from the 2022 legislative session, if you Google ESHB 1630, which stands for the engross substitute House Bill 1630, that is the bill that will be associated with the RCW. One other point I'd like to make, the consequences for law enforcement now more than ever is that if we do not follow certain laws, we could be, it could be a dereliction of duty and actions for which could lead to personal liability for us and/or revocation of our state police certification, which in essence, we would no longer be able to be police officers. So obviously, we do our best to try to follow the law. The permitting process that was rejected at the last meeting was a tool that could have assisted law enforcement. If an individual chose to get a permit, then the police department would have invaluable intelligence such as when and where the demonstration would take place, how many is expected to be in attendance, who is in charge and et cetera. We, when we can plan for events, things tend to go much more smoothly and safer for our officers and citizens. By rejecting that amendment just prevents us from being more prepared, but I will ask that the Parks Department send our way any citizens who desire to obtain such a permit. We wouldn't issue a paper permit, however, hopefully we would still obtain that invaluable information and still prepare accordingly. At the last City Council meeting, and I'm sorry she doesn't appear to be here, but Council Member Obe had asked a question for which I apologize for not circling back and I believe the question, as I recall it, was along the line, if police would still be able to provide protection to those, to those at demonstrations. And my answer to that is this, that the police department is still obligated to follow current law and protect and provide a 250-foot open carrier buffer for such demonstrations. With respect to the demonstration that occurred here in Aberdeen on March, on June 14th of 2020, I had the pleasure of being in Texas for the birth of my grandson. However, my poor deputy chief, Jay Staten, called me a number of times on that day to fill me in with what was developing. Contrary to some comments that were made at the last City Council meeting, there were certainly challenges and some anxiety, even on the parts of the officers, that the police department had attempted to de-escalate between the two competing groups while they were at the City Hall Plaza. There were many more complaints that came in after the fact, many of which complained that the police department did not do enough to control the situation or protect participants. No doubt, the open carry law that passed was because of a similar incidence or complaints throughout the state. After today, I'll be here for only one more City Council meeting and unfortunately, my involvement will be limited. I just felt important to share my thoughts and provide some additional insight. My recommendation in that of our legal counsel is that the city should accurately incorporate state law to our city codes. I believe not doing so is a disservice to our citizens as we would not be providing them with updated information on current laws. And as a final comment, and I appreciate your time, I would simply say this, regardless of our personal views or the council voting to not codify certain state laws into our AMCs, the Aberdeen police officers will be tasked with upholding them. AMCs, the Aberdeen police officers will be tasked with upholding them. So with that, I am certainly open to any questions if appropriate this time. Yes?
So what, what happened if there was?
Use your microphone, please.
David, I can never hear you. If there was a situation where there was a demonstration and guns present, and we were not able to, because of the coast, the current movie, vote on the code, and you were to go in and try to de-escalate the situation, and something must have happened, and there was an injury, would the city then have a possibility of being liable?
We're, we're permanently liable for anything within our city. Now, if, if you, have you had a chance to read that statute by chance?
No.
It refers to fifteen or more individuals on public property. Now, I've been to a number of our second amendment demonstrations, and, and my encounters with those groups has been nothing but professional. But they also recognize if they do that on private property, they can limit individuals who may be problematic for them, and that is key. Yes, Councilmember Taylor?
Does it affect concealed weapons?
No. It's open carry.
Just open carry?
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Shaw.
Councilmember Shaw.
Just a small comment. So at the end of the day, regardless of what we might feel personally, the Aberdeen City Council needs to be a law-abiding citizen.
Well, yes. I mean, the Aberdeen police officers obviously have a lot riding on if they do not follow the rules, and there's a great deal of liability now. And in some cases, officers can be held criminally liable.
And, and if we don't agree with a law that's been passed, we still need to follow it, but there's another legislature, and there's the courts, and it might be changed again, but in the meantime, it's the law.
Correct. Councilmember Ellis.
Would we need a motion to ask that this come back to council for, to revisit the vote?
If I may respond to that, my recommendation is to do this jointly. I felt, and as I mentioned, I pulled it because I thought there should be further conversation with the council. But to be frank, this was supposed to go jointly. Director Barnum's just much more efficient than I am, and so she had hers before me. But perhaps that ended up being for the better. And again, I will say, in, in my thirty-three years, and even at the sheriff's office, I, just like Sheriff Scott, I'm, I'm a supporter of our second amendment rights with responsible gun ownership. But with that, I also, as a law enforcement officer, have to abide by the laws that we have in the state. So I guess back to your point, my recommendation at some point for the department, whether it's at the next city council meeting, which will be my last city council meeting, or do it at some point in the future, is bring those collectively together. Because what Director Barnum brought forward was just making modifications to our permit process. I think perhaps had she not included anything that related to firearms, that it probably would have been a very moot point. But it was, the point to that was to follow. And again, for those who have not read the RCW for that, what it says is that you can get a permit, and our hope was creating assistance for an individual who chose to want to come in, not knowing if they would have fifteen or more people, and get a permit. And so we would have that intel of knowing, okay, who are you, where do you want to do this, so I can have staff prepared in the event that we add, you know, counter demonstrations. And if we knew we were having counter demonstrations, then we would try to set that up at another location, preferably on private property, because that gives that individual or that group more latitude. And so each can, you know, demonstrate and express, you know, the wishes as they see fit. But both of these coming together would be appropriate at some point.
Very good, thank you.
Director Barnum, I just want to add one, one comment to the permit process. So since there is no permit process currently, what the law says is that on the spot, the chief of police, or the mayor, or I think the sheriff, would declare that event a permitted event. So then, in that moment, they're like, okay, this is a permitted event. Then they have to figure out what two hundred and fifty feet is, where if we know in advance, have an idea of the location where people are at, we can already have our engineering department, or, or even just through an aerial photo, we can figure out about where that two hundred and fifty radius is. So that was the intent of the permit process, was to provide that information in advance for our police department.
Councilmember Lawrence.
What did you say about carrying in, in the council? Was that open carry?
Open carry. And then, I mean, I'm simplifying it, but if you, so it should be updated tomorrow, but if you go to the RCW nine forty-one three zero five, it will, it will give you a definition of weapons. So it's, I mean, you can't have, you can't open carry nunchucks and sword, swords and things of that nature.
Anything else?
No. So as of right now, if there was a demonstration, you would have to go in and enforce it according to state laws.
Correct.
So whether we voted no on it or not, you'd have to override what the decision we made last time because of what you have to enforce.
Correct.
So.
Just logistically, it obviously creates more challenges. This, this law went into effect May of 2021, and for those who can remember, we had a bit of a demonstration in front of the Star Wars store back in August. And so that one was something that we monitored, because we did have individuals executing their rights to open carry. But we also had individuals not far away who started to pull together. And had there been fifteen individuals or more, and then they said, we, we want this to be a permitted demonstration, we would have been forced to have to, okay, where's two hundred and fifty feet? Try to navigate that and have those individuals be outside that boundary. So logistically and safety-wise, it creates some challenges for the police department not having intel or early warning of something occurring.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Shuame. So I'm just quickly going to summarize the reports from the police department and the fire department. Police had three thousand one hundred ninety-three service requests for the month of May, which is an average of a hundred and three per day. They continue to be very, very busy. The police VIPs and the police explorers were very helpful to the Aberdeen Fire Department as they continued to meet with all the residents of the trailer park in South Aberdeen and get them set up with fire, smoke alarms, thank you. And we're very appreciative for all that they do for our community. Police Explorer Abigail Toibell has been hired to fill the vacant police services specialist position. Commander Dale Green will be graduating from the FBI National Academy on June ninth. And APD Officers Bob Green, George Kelly, and Lieutenant CJ Chastain have all worked their last shifts. And there will be a celebration of their service to the city on Wednesday, June fifteenth. And this will be held at the Loggic Billion at two P. M. And Chief Shuame wants to thank Chief Hubbard for his many years of service. And from the fire department, we have a report for the fire calls for Aberdeen for the month of May. We're five hundred and ten altogether. There were twelve structured fires and four hundred and sixteen rescue and emergency medical service calls. Again, these numbers are very, very high, and they're keeping all of our personnel really, really busy. Cosmopolis had twenty-four rescue and emergency medical service calls and a good intent call for a total of twenty-five calls for the month. And we also have a report from the fire service specialist for the month of May. She made a hundred and forty-seven home visits, thirty-eight home visited for smoke alarm installation, and sixty-eight smoke alarms were installed as well as the home fire safety education. And again, special thanks to the APD VIPs, Doug Zimmer, Ray Winter, Emily Shue, Carol Winter, Julie Shore, and the explorers, Tommy, Kyle, Cruz, Dale, and Brady. Also, the Aberdeen Fire Department has come out with a community risk assessment that was put together by fire service specialist Monica Myers. And Chief Hubbard asked to recognize her for her efforts to make Aberdeen a safer place for our citizens to live, work, and play. And I'll make, make sure that all the council members get a copy of this. It's really great information, and it's a working document that'll be reviewed annually, but it's just a fantastic overview of our systems. So I'd be happy to pass it on. So as mentioned, we did have one item on the agenda tonight in under reports and communications. So I have a report from public safety and the police chief recommending that the mayor be authorized to sign the agreement with permitting to utilize their online CPL services and add a one-dollar surcharge. I move we adopt this report.
I second it.
Motion was made and seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Under discussion, Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you. So concealed carry permit is cost forty-nine dollars, twenty-five cents for five years. And I, I just, I would like, I see the benefit in hiring a company to simplify and streamline the permitting of, of this permit. But I want to make sure that their costs are covered. And so I'm wondering.
I believe the report said that it would take nine, nine permits per month to cover the costs of, of hiring this company.
It's just shy of nine.
Just shy of nine, but we.
And I'll be frank, with the changes in the gun laws, we will, I'm not, if we hit forty to fifty, I won't be surprised. And anytime you have a presidential election, the number goes up even higher. So I don't know the last time that we were below the twentieth, to be frank.
So I don't think there's going to be any problem. And this is going to be so much easier for not only city staff, but for our citizens as well.
Well, that's what I was wondering. Thank you for the, it probably helps.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion?
Grace Harbor County is already using this, aren't they, as well?
Yes.
And I might add, it's faster.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. That solves for public safety this evening.
Okay, thank you. Any special agenda items? Council President, Catchman?
Yes, we have a few tonight. First, under reports and communications, we have a report from personnel and the Human Resources Director recommending that the city council appoint Assistant Chief Dave Golding to interim fire chief and authorize a five percent pay increase effective June eleventh, 2022, authorizing the mayor to extend this pay increase until a fire chief is hired. I move that we accept this report.
Second, Ellis.
Motion was made and seconded to accept this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Next is a report from the Parks Director recommending that the city council approve the accession of the item donated by May Jo McCann into the city's museum collection. I move that we accept this report.
I second.
Motion was made and seconded to accept this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the last report tonight is a report from the Parks Director recommending that the mayor be authorized to sign the Fourth Amendment easement for use of parcel number zero one four six zero zero eight zero zero nine zero one, Garley Park, with a term-end date of June thirtieth, 2024. I move that we accept this report.
I second.
Motion was made and seconded to accept this report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And next, under ordinances, we have the first reading of bill twenty-two zero, oh, sorry, I scratched that one. Finally, under ordinance, we have the second reading and public hearing of bill number twenty-two zero six and ordinance amending AMC code Section two dot six four dot zero two zero relating to Aberdeen Board of Museum and History meetings. I move that we open the public hearing.
I second.
Motion was made and seconded to open the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is open. Of, this subject is, the public hearing is open for the Aberdeen Board of Museum meeting times. Okay?
Nobody on Zoom. Seeing none, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed.
I move that we accept the second reading of bill number twenty-two dash zero six.
I second.
Motion is made and seconded to accept the second reading of this bill. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes.
That's it for special agenda items.
Okay, thank you. Next, I'll move on to public comments on any subject.
So I'd like to give you an update on the halfway house on fifteen oh four Cherry Street. As of Thursday, June second, two men moved in. Friday the third, two more men moved in. By now, the city had a building permit request to not issue.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Patrick Locke. A building permit was not requested, but issued due, was not issued due to cans for remodeling due to the flood plan, no waterproof, was deceased owner in the deceased owner's name, was being used since May thirteenth that I knew of, was told to transfer, but has not to date. No permit was issued due to discrepancy of owner. The county says it's Eric Olson, who lives in Pialo. But Howard Vaughn claims that he's leaving him around, and they're waiting for proof. House was re-tagged again. Sign was removed later that day. Three children were dropped off on Friday in the evening to stay for the weekend. No license has been issued for the halfway house or rental license has been applied for. Old owner did a bunch of work to the house and was not permitted, and so now they must be permitted and inspected prior to issuance of a license to move in. Monday, June sixth, house was re-tagged again for the third time. Sign was removed by Howard. No permit has been issued, still pending. Moved in another male. Water and sewer was shut off due to theft. Wednesday, today, another male moved in. How can this be legal to live in a remodel, live in if they're remodeling and do not have a license to stay or water in the owner's name? How many people can cram in this small house? Was told by the planning department, the house is not zoned for a halfway house and has to have an application submitted. It has to be inspected prior to renting, rental, per the city ordinance, five point oh six point oh four residential rental business license requirement. Failure to obtain a residential rental business license will result in inability to rent the unit. Five point oh six point oh five oh inspection required. When a unit changes from owner's occupancy to venture, inspection must occur before the unit is occupied by a tenant. There are more quotes, but I'm short on time. When I see, I don't see the tenants working, they're coming and going all day long, some on the halfway, and they're going to the halfway house on West Fifth Street, they're hanging out on the porch, they're having company till nine-thirty, ten o'clock every night. How is this a sole place for someone, for someone to rehab? How can they stay if it hasn't been approved? DOC does not even know that these people are guy, these people are living here. How do, how do I know if any of these guys are sex offenders? Mr. Vaughn has a hundred and fifteen cases in Washington State courts, in Pierce County. Did I mention that Mr. Vaughn had a house closed? And he also is being investigated for fraud in King County, or King Five.
Thirty seconds.
I mean, I suggest that people going around the neighborhood, they're afraid to talk here, they're afraid to get on the camera. I suggest, you know, they're, these guys are campaigning against us, I feel. I mean, something has to be done. There's no water service or sewer, they shouldn't be there. It's not even approved, and they're still living there, and they're easily moving. It's frustrating.
Thank you.
So my name is Sarah Locke, I'm Pat's wife. Our son Drew is a senior at Aberdeen. Him and his girlfriend were leaving our home the other day and were questioned by one of the guys scanning on the porch. Wanted to know who we were, that. Wanted to know who we were, that Drew, our son, looked familiar, that my husband and I looked familiar, what were our names? Luckily, my son has a good head on his shoulders and isn't stupid. And he goes, I want to tell you. These guys come and go all day long. Anytime any one of us neighbors walks out our door, here they come. And they stare us down. I went to get my foster daughter from school. Two of the people that show up to the house drove past me down here by the um, post office and drove by very slow. The driver hunched over the passenger and they were both hanging out the passenger side window, staring at me to make sure that that was my truck. And they went on by. This is every single day and night, um, pounding until midnight. Um, so much noise, almost all night long. Um, they had, this weekend, there was a bunch of, a carload of girls that showed up and they sat out on the porch for a good hour and a half until about ten o'clock, until they all decided to leave. Said very loud they were going to a meeting. Well, I'm an addict in recovery, I will be clean for eight years. There's no meeting at nine o'clock at night. It's, it's a joke. And every single day, there is somebody new hauling bags into the house. Um, the house is being painted right now. Um, we were leaving, the guy was up on the roof painting the house. Um, it's, when they're questioning my child, he may be eighteen, he may be a tough kid, can handle his own, but at the end of the day, each and every single one of these guys looks like they just got released from jail or prison. And that's no joke. Um, half the people that we have called about have had warrants out for their arrest.
Thirty seconds.
And they're just let go and move along. And it's pretty sad that twenty years, over twenty years of living in this neighborhood and, and owning this home, our entire neighborhood, um, has just been completely, God, I can't see what I really want to say, but um, I think you guys get it. I'm just hoping and praying that none of these guys are sex offenders. I got a foster daughter and a twelve-year-old daughter.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Stan Seedor. I had not intended to say anything tonight, but uh, this is the first city council meeting I've attended in about forty-seven years. I've just returned to the city of Aberdeen where I was born and raised after being gone for about forty-five years. And I'd like to congratulate all of you because I'll tell you, the last time I was in a city council meeting was when I was a senior in high school here in Aberdeen, and they were pretty pitiful meetings. You conducted yourselves quite well, this was a great meeting, and uh, I'm glad I came. It gives me a lot of confidence in the leadership in the city of Aberdeen. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Abigail Anderson. Um, I just wanted to make a comment about uh, building owners that are raising rents to renters who have been paying all along, um, to make up for the people that haven't been paying rent. It's happening all over town. And I was wondering if there was any incentive to get Emirates or others to make improvements or repairs. So far, a lot of the repairs have been having to be made by tenants themselves. And is there any recourse to curb the growing population of rats, raccoons, and cockroaches? It's, it's awful. And is there any way of, any kind of help? Is there, does no one really want to bring back the mall? Even the fund centers can be the aid. And I've witnessed people attacking the mall, and my property is still in the mall and is being destroyed nightly. Um, and, and that I'm not allowed to go in and treat my own wounds. But I, I really thought the mall was a part of our, our community, where to go to the movies, to go shopping, uh, it was a wonderful place. And is there any person or office that we could call? Because I know the police are busy, like the people throwing garbage out or shooting up or pulling up plants. Is there any, any thing that we could report things like that to or to? Like, when buildings are being overrun with rats and the plumbing, I've got eighteen plus in my store. Um, doing the plumbing of the, uh, and tenants upstairs. So, I was just wondering if there was a, a place to report things like that.
Thirty seconds. Nine-one-one? Thank you.
Excuse me, Ward four. Last night at um, three-fifty P M., I decided to go down to Breakwater. Well, traffic's pretty heavy and I don't like turning, having to park across the street from Breakwater. So, I go onto the bridge on South Eighth Street. Sorry, Deputy Ross, I was just reading the email, I said Eighth Street. I talked into my computer, I didn't have time.
I understand.
I have a really bad habit of not proofreading. Anyway, so I saw this white part, truck parked by the tracks, noticed a train going by. Saw a girl jump out of the white truck, run toward the train. Well, unfortunately, I didn't get her on camera because I had turned to go toward the Breakwater, but she had jumped up on the train, crossed in between the cars, and jumped on the other side of the train while the train was moving. That person sat in the white truck waiting for him. He must have been in a hurry to pick something up, you can all imagine what. Earlier that day, I drove over the tracks. I had to sit there for five minutes while people got their butts and their junk out of the road so I could drive by. It is a public road and I am going to be driving by there a lot. And uh, I live up by there and it's getting really bad. People walking around in the middle of the night, I haven't caught anybody yet. But it gets terrible. Truckies just walking around, not knowing where they're going, what they're doing. And we still have in fourth ward, speeders, especially down Sixth Street. I catch them on my cameras all the time. I just haven't felt like going out there yet since the last time, but I will be going out there and I will be yelling at these punks that are speeding, and they only live a block and a half from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to council comments. Anyone on the council? Go ahead, Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to speak to the six-year transportation improvement proposal. I had spoken with many of the people who wrote in as part of the public, um, testimony and, and others who just wanted me to convey their concerns. There's about three and a half million dollars in funds designated within the T I P for um, street repair, sidewalk repair, and, and miscellaneous. And, and what I, what I, and I think many of my neighbors would like to see is that some of that T I P money be further earmarked to specific projects so that citizens, citizens can see some plan for how the city will be rebuilding some of these old streets and curves in the neighborhoods. Many of them aren't, aren't high-profile enough to get on a big project list, but we need, we need to start taking away at this backlog and it would be nice to see them actually called out in some sort of a plan for um, repair. I think my husband would agree one hundred percent.
Anyone else? Councilmember Shaw.
Yes, I just wanted to follow up on the comments we had about the activity near one of our parks. And I know that from the comment we had about the so-called halfway house is probably something you'll be asking code enforcement or community development to look into and could, I'd just like to request that whatever report is provided to you about the activity taking place in that, um, that neighborhood be shared with the council.
The uh,
Code Enforcement and Director Scott are working on this. I've been in touch with them.
Yeah.
Almost daily. And we're waiting for some word on, from legal counsel. But I agree, I, I'm sorry that I didn't think to pass that on to Councilmember Shaw.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Is it our code enforcement that's tagging this property?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think, I believe they actually spoke directly with the owner today, letting the owner know that there shouldn't be anybody living there right now. But beyond that, I don't know what they can do.
They're working on it.
They are working on it.
Okay, anyone else? Councilmember Taylor.
I just have a question regarding that, if they're in the house, and they're not supposed to be because it's been tagged.
There's, there's no wa, yeah, there's no water, there's no electricity, it has been red-tagged.
Breaking the law, is that illegal?
Maybe trespassing then?
Crossovering if they're is normally and unlawfully in that building or dwelling, the unlawful part would be the owner saying that they can't be there. But when you're talking of dwelling, that's when the whole landlord-tenant issues come in. So, this is not something that, the process for eviction is a bit lengthy in the great state of Washington. So, I do know at today's mayor's meeting, uh, Community Development Director Lisa Scott made mention that they've been in touch with legal counsel. There is a process for which needs to be followed. It is a civil process, but it is, it is a slow process. So, I certainly feel for the residents who are living nearby there.
And speaking of legal counsel, I might mention Joshua O is with us tonight.
Looks like maybe Director Scott.
Yeah, I popped on as well. If there were some specific questions, um, we'd be more than happy to answer, but we have been there on a daily basis. We have tagged the house on three separate occasions with which the, the red tag has been removed three separate times, which is punishable up to a thousand-dollar fine for each instance. When we find, unfortunately, it does end up going to court and nine times out of the ten, the judge does reduce the, the fee. But that's our process, it isn't fast by any stretch. The unfortunate thing is, is yes, they do, they do have power, they do not have water and sewer, um, they had tapped into it illegally. And so, that was what we were following up on, but when we actually have somebody that is in the house, whether they're supposed to be there or not, landlord-tenant laws do come into play, and so we have to follow those rules. So, we touched base, we had been touching base with the owner's partner and we got on the phone with the owner today and the owner, um, will be rectifying the situation and, and following the path to correctness and working to get everybody out in the meantime. So, we'll continue to keep you apprised of what's going on, um, as we work our way through the process.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do they have a deadline for when they're supposed to be out?
No, we, uh, we're, we're supposed to hear back from the owner tomorrow. Uh, I think tomorrow afternoon, we're scheduled to meet again and we'll have some additional information at that time on what that looks like. Uh, the vaca, the vacating the premises.
Hey, thank you. Any, anyone else? Seeing none?
Anything else on this topic? Anything?
Is there any more council comment?
All right, I have a question, I have some questions about the bird ride scooters, that, well, yeah, legal counsel here.
Yeah.
We haven't yet had a chance to, uh, we were supposed to meet with Hillary today and that got canceled till Friday, so we haven't yet had a chance to go over that with her. Um, the, the laundry list that you, that we have of questions that, uh, that came out yesterday from Public Works.
You have those, okay.
So, we, yes, we will be discussing those, but again, our meeting got canceled from today until Friday, so we'll be bringing that up on Friday.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there's nothing else, I move we adjourn.
Motion was made and seconded to adjourn. There's no objection, I will adjourn this meeting. Good night, everybody. Good night.
Good night, John.